All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for everyone in attendance for tonight's bond and override committee. To review just another overview of some of the items that were requested at our previous meeting. And then we do have some of the handouts as well at the front when you first walked in. I know there's a couple new faces. Now, we do have some microphones here at the table, so hopefully we'll don't mind kind of sharing as needed. But I'll start off, if you don't mind, I know there's especially since today, I do want to have a little bit more conversation within the committee. So just kind of be able to introduce yourselves again, just to make sure everyone at the table is familiar with the faces. So don't mind starting, Johnny.
Okay, Johnny Melton.
Is that one on?
Is it on? I don't know. Oh, it's on. Hi, Johnny Melton, Litchfield Manor. Now, now city council, Reverend District Four. And had two, most of my kids go to Dyzart. And now they're on the way to college, so glad to serve on this committee.
Thank you.
And I'm Kelly Spear out in Asante, and I have a daughter at Willow Canyon.
Thank you, Kelly.
Good evening, Patrick Campbell, Dyzart employee. Coach, I've got kids in the district, so yeah, just very involved with the with everything going on with the bond override committee.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jason Roberts. I live in Surprise Farms, and I have a daughter who attends Western Peak Elementary.
All right, great. Thank you.
You have Shannon Frazier on the phone. Shannon, do you want to say hi?
Yes, sorry, Shannon Frazier.
Okay, she's on the phone, and then Mr. Travis Waddell is out there. He'll be back in in a minute.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, we'll get started. I know I want to honor everybody's time tonight. And so just to recap what we're going to be discussing tonight. So our objectives really is to provide data as requested. At the previous meeting, there were some items that. Well, if you recall, our very first meeting, we just went over again a summary, especially since a lot of this information is still kind of fresh to the committee. Since we did the process over the span of over six months last year. We really just reviewed what that process was last time. And so based on that, there were specific requests that were made, and so we'll look at that tonight and just get a little bit of your input from that. The next thing we just want to, again, we'll break it down with first going over the bond. And then also then just getting your input on, you know, do we look at the needs, do we revise those needs? Just really get your recommendations and thoughts on any proposed refinements to that to that request. And then ultimately, we want to kind of get to the point where are we at the, you know, is the committee feeling comfortable to make that recommendation? Or finalize the recommendations to the governing board as ultimately they would be the ones to call for a bond and or an override election. And we'll talk about what the next steps are for for the for the committee after this. Okay, so the first request that had come in was regarding what is the history on districts that go out for multiple questions? And so often it's, you typically see the if it's a bond or if it's an override. As you recall from our conversations, there's various types of overrides. There are either an MNO override or a district additional assistance override. It's essentially a capital override. They're both tax on, it's a secondary tax for both of those, but that is all approved by the voters. And then there's some of those questions on there. You'll see property. So if, for example, if they have any sale of property, that has to go to the voters as well. And so you'll see some districts that opted to do that, any kind of property changes to have have to be voter approved. And so it was interesting to see, we pulled a five-year history. And so you'll have that in front of you as well as on on the screen here. But you'll see, starting in 2024, there were multiple districts that went out. It looks like, I think there were 12 of them there that went out for multiple questions. One of them, it looks like Levine went out for three different questions to their voters. And so the trend, the question was, if you go out, is it most likely that one passes or one fails or vice, you know, vice versa? And really, the trend that we're seeing the last few years is either they both pass or they both fail. So whatever the reason may be, based on the the specific community's needs, you know, within those districts, you'll see. And there's, you know, for example, I'm looking at Sierra Vista up there, they both both questions failed. Thirty-eight percent was the only approval rate on there. The other districts that failed were Deer Valley, they had a bond and an MNO override question. And then Higley went out for a 15% override and a bond. And again, these are just the order that the questions were on the on the pamphlet. Then in 2023, similar for the most part, they either both passed or they both failed. There were a couple districts in there that it was just the bond that passed, but the override. I'm sorry, the bond that failed, the override did pass for Mesa, and then also the property question for Fountain Hills passed. And so the next slide, same same thing, you can kind of look at the trend, the next few were 2022, 21, and 20. You're starting to see more, it looks like trending more districts in 2020, there were only six districts that went out with multiple questions. So you're seeing more districts, you know, going out with putting multiple questions on the ballot. But really, I don't, you know, kind of collect your thoughts, what your thoughts are. But really, we started in 2020, there were six districts that had multiple questions, and now that doubled up to 12 of them in 2024. But you see the passing rate, whether both questions passed, 75% of those both questions passed in 2024. And at least one of the, at least one of the questions passed was that last column there. If, so you may not have had 100% success rate, but did at least one of your questions pass? And so that's the trend on there. So interesting information. So I appreciate Stiefel was able to gather this information for us. And so they trend, they they capture all the trend and and look at that data every time elections are completed to see kind of where school district trends are happening. Welcome. Okay, so and we can certainly discuss along the way if you have questions on that. Otherwise, we can just discuss as a group as we open it up for committee conversation. The next item that was requested was reviewing bond tax rate estimates based off of a couple different scenarios. So as you recall, at the previous bond election, it was a $127 million request that was put out there. And so some of the request was, well, what if we brought that down below the $100 million mark? What does that do on the tax rate? So and then also, if you extend it to be repaid within 15 years rather than pushing it out to 20 years, what impact does that have as well? So I pulled a couple scenarios, again, reached out to Stiefel, so I appreciate all their work on helping gather this information. But you see on there a $90 million bond over 20 years, you see that impact. And I apologize, it's very small to see on there. But the column that you'll want to take a look at is really this column, the third to the end. It says new combined amount, so you'll see the tax rate impact that adding on a $90 million bond would have on the tax rate. So ultimately, the the goal would be, you don't want, again, your community to see a spike in their tax rates, right? So the very far right column, you'll see where our estimated tax rate is if we combined and layered on a new bond. The fourth column in, or I'm sorry, it's really hard to explain, the one that says existing bonds. So you start with a projected limited assessed value. The next column over, which is the next one highlighted there, says existing bonds. As you recall, we've mentioned our current bonds, they are going to be paid off at the end of fiscal year 2028. So you see the tax rate currently associated with those. It's an 83 cent tax rate, then it's going to be 75 cents, 61 cent, and then 29 cent. Does everyone see where that piece is at? Okay. So really, the the concept is then if you layer on these additional bonds to the very far right is where once you layer them on, what will that do to the tax rate to both now that you've combined your existing ones that you're going to pay off? And you layer on the new ones. And so there you see really, it's it holds pretty steady until starting fiscal year, it looks like 2030. Is once the previous ones are fully paid off, now it really significantly drops from 73 cents down to 15 cents and so forth. So that was one scenario, just wanted to point that out. Really, the average annual tax rate you see down there in the bottom, once you cumulatively look at all those years, it's a 17 cent tax rate. And so really, it's about $17 on an average assessed valuation home of $100,000. And that's just the average over the course of those years. Obviously, would it fluctuate the years that we're paying higher principal? It's going to be a higher rate, but on average, about 17.
Recap, what, you said 2028 for current bonds being paid off?
That's correct.
Twenty twenty eight.
Yep, so that you see right there on that column, it says existing bonds. It's a $17 million payment in 2025, and then it starts going down until 2028, our final payment is $8,081. So then the other scenarios, okay, well, what if we look at, it's 90 million, what if we do it over 15 years? Because obviously, we want to also ensure that we are being fiscally responsible and not paying more interest than necessary. So something to consider here is while the tax rate now you see down there, that 22 cents, it does go up, the average annual tax rate. However, compared to the, so it's higher than the previous 17. However, when I was looking at the total amount of interest paid on the 20-year bond, you'd be looking at about $32.8 million in interest paid versus on the 15, it's about 23.9. So right there, you're saving almost, you know, almost $10 million in interest by paying it off over the course of five years sooner. It is a little bit more of an aggressive tax rate, but you also pay less on on tax on interest overall. So that's another scenario. The other scenario that was just looked at was just, okay, move it up a little bit up to 95 million. What does that look like? You see, it doesn't budge too much. It's a 19 cents average annual tax rate now over the course of those 20 years. And same thing, now if you look at it over 15 years, it's a 24 cent tax rate average. So really, all of these scenarios, very similar to what we had kind of structured with the $127 million bond. The intent was that not to have that tax rate go higher than what taxpayers are currently already paying into. And really, once the previous bonds are fully paid off in '28, it would have dropped dramatically. I mean, we saw, remember, the chart, it kind of dropped by half what that tax rate would be. So that, let's see if I have anything else here. So this is just the summary on that piece that just shows you really for those 90 versus 95 million dollar, what that new bond's average annual rate would be on 100,000 assessed valuation home. About $17, ranging up to $24, based on the different rates. And it'll, you know, the the $127 million bond was an average of about $36, average increased rate on 100,000 assessed valuation home. So a lot of homes, the average home here in Surprise is about 197,000 assessed valuation, so rounded up to about 200,000. So you'd be looking at about double that for your average annual amount paid. And John, if you don't mind speaking into mics, if you can.
And just to reiterate, the difference in interest paid between the 20-year and the 15-year term is approximately 5 million? Does that sound right?
So, yeah, so you can see that too on those, the scenarios down there where you see the total. Well, I mean, you'd have to add the different interest columns, but for example, the 95 million 15-year is 26.3 million in interest versus the 95-20-year is 35.7 million in interest. So that one, I mean, they all have about, close to about a $9 to $10 million savings by compressing that payment period by about five years. So obviously, the counter to that is you have to be a little bit more aggressive on the payment and increase the taxes. The the tax rate gets adjusted, but still with the goal of the tax rate not being above what the current taxpayers are experiencing now. Great question. Any other questions as you're looking through that information? Okay, so again, I know you were all very familiar with where these figures came from. You know, when we met with the committee last year, we really drilled into what was the makeup of all of these individual ones. And I know at our last committee meeting, we provided that information again, just in case, you know, just kind of refresh what the bus replacements were made of, it was 17 million. What a new K-8 school would be, about 35. Purchasing land for high school, it was requested, estimate about 10. Facility repairs, again, any renovations, that includes, you know, flooring repairs, air conditioning replacements, chillers. Just all of the things related are facilities that are needing to be replaced at this point in time was about $48 million. And then safety and security, a lot of those needs and enhancements needed at our various sites were estimated at about 17. So at the time, it was $127 million was the estimated cost. So really, what I wanted to have the opportunity is really open up to the committee for you to have that conversation of, you know, as we know, the the bond failed. And so some of the feedback that's come in since then is, was the 127 the right figure? Is it something that we truly, I know the conversation as a committee was, these were needs. And I think just to go back and really open it up to your feedback is, is there a need to go back and kind of just revisit some of those? And and get it closer to some of those other amounts that others have have been stating?
One question that I had, and I was thinking about this as I was driving over. Do you think that perhaps the fact that this bond was pitched during an election year that may have had an effect on voter participation? And perhaps now that we're out of the election cycle, maybe they can focus a little more on it? While at the same time, we can possibly go a little closer to 127 million?
That's a great question. I mean, I think the general feedback is yes. I mean, it draws out a lot more voters, especially in a presidential election. So maybe some voters that, it depends on kind of who your base is going to be. I know Johnny probably has some words on that too.
The number, I I do not think the number played a role, okay? When I look back. You, I think your your premise is correct, where in that we had, this is a presidential cycle, and the voters are not paying attention to that far down ballot. There was no organized opposition to the bond last year. So what, it was just simply, I I don't think, I I don't think we got the message out. That's my, that's my gut tells me. So the number, whether it was 127 million or 99 million, I don't, I don't know if it would matter at last year. I think having an off at the off-year election, there are some baked-in advantages based on turnout and what and whatnot. But I I'm, I don't, I would not, I don't think it's that necessary to go back and revisit these numbers. I just don't think the numbers played a difference. I think it was, there was other undercurrents there, so.
So I want to, I want to tag off what what Johnny just stated. I'll be honest, I was surprised. I mean, when our information came back and we did our, we did our due diligence. Dr. Kroto and company phenomenal approach at doing the the clarity and the just transparency, just clear, getting out, doing the right thing, speaking to the troops, if you will, that was all well. That said, there is a huge, and the irony is, we're a school district and we educate people. There's a huge misunderstanding of what exactly a bond and or an override, what do they do? How is that money used? What do we need? They're not budgeting their money. Dyzart has been proven over and over, Meridale's done an incredible job at educating us to help then educate others at how well fiscally responsible Dyzart is being. That's not up for debate in comparison to other school districts. So that said, what I've learned, and this is from a personal approach, the frustration was, and all, it's social media, it is a thing. Reading the comments, looking at what people are saying about why the bond failed, and they were glad the bond failed because, and I'm just going to pick random things. But, you know, because the the superintendent's just wanted to give themselves a big old raise. And you're just reading this going, but that's not true. So I believe there was a vote, we didn't lose the bond election by much, but we lost it by enough of a misconception of what it does. So people in their unknowing voted no, thinking they were doing the right thing. When what they don't understand is that bonds and overrides, the school district, I'm just gonna, I hope I'm correct when I say this. If I'm, if I'm speaking wrong, it's my opinion. We don't enjoy having to use bonds and overrides. I don't think anybody enjoys having to do business the way we do, but it's a fact of life. Those first several slides that Meridale went over with all the different, those are just the doubles, the bonds and override. That list is long, and I closely watched all the bond and override elections in this last cycle. And you saw some overwhelmingly passed, others not so much. Why? And it was because I feel some of it was the the lack of education to the public. So what that tells me is the numbers are fine. I agree with Johnny. The 127 million, that was a defined need. Those needs did not go away. If anything, they just got more expensive. That said, our task is now educating properly, and it's not any one person's fault. I don't want to take it as a failure, but it that we need to do better at educating the people. What exactly are we doing with this? And how does it work and that kind of stuff? I'd be willing to bet, if you went and polled the average 100 people off the street, a bond, what does it do? An override, what does it do? Most educated adults probably couldn't really define the difference because they say the two together. I was guilty of that before I came on this committee last time because a bond override, what is it? Well, they'd had to be explained to me, this is what it is. We're tasked with getting that out now. I don't think the numbers are that big of a deal. That's just Pat's opinion. But that said, I feel like we're close, and we can get this done. I'm an optimist. We can get this done. But it's going to start with educating at the grassroots level, and we have to do a better job of organizing to get to that level.
Patrick, that was a really good summary of everything that we we covered even in the last committee. You know, through the six months last year, you know, the the 127 million, we we went round and round with that last year of trying to say like, is there a way to prioritize the list of, you know? We asked each one of those, even those specialists in those areas. For example, we had Jason Yager come in here, we had, you know, for safety, Todd Bletter came in here for for the facilities. There are, when when we do, when we do look at these areas, we do put time in to say. There are, when, when we do, when we do look at these areas, we do put time into saying, okay, what is the most prevalent need at this moment right now? For example, something you don't see on the list here, that, that the district also, I mean, and there's expenses that, that Meridale will say, like, you know, we have to figure out sometimes how to do it, is like, for example, if elevators are breaking or something like that, I mean, that's a, that's something that we got to have that's operating on our campuses with a two-story building, right? So, for safety needs. But we did look at specifically each one of the areas of the bond, and, and for example, I mean, you know, just talking about the facility repair piece of 48 million, there was a discussion of the fact that 5 million of that was looking at a renovation of the auditorium at DIZARD, and 15 million was restroom facilities at, primarily at Shadow and Willow, and then also the, some renovations to restrooms at DIZARD High School, and then also even looking at, because there was no concession, and we bring in the food trucks, and we said that could be part of that building if you made a restroom facility. So, there was about 15 million that was accounted for that. So, between just those two, that's 20 million on there, okay? That was 20 million of the 48 million. And that 48 million, if you remember the chart we did, we even did a spreadsheet where we actually did identify every single school of everything because of when those schools were built, from about 2003 to 2007, eight, nine, you know, somewhere in there, seven, that those 20 to 20 years and what that's causing as far as those, those needs. So we, we wanted to make sure it was, there was transparency to, what are the two expenses that are, that are actually hitting us right now?
Right. But based on the committee, I mean, it sounds like the conversation currently, that was a need last year, and so, you know, as Patrick mentioned, the need hasn't been reduced. In fact, Craig says, like, just when we say, you know, we identified, I think we, we got it, and all of a sudden, yes, elevators now came up. Or there's, there's always just something else that does come up that is going to occur in, in buildings that are at that 20-year mark. But yes, so, as Craig mentioned, we did go back, because that was the feedback, you know, hey, maybe, maybe 127, was, was that too much? So we did go back to our directors and just, again, let's look, what, if we really just had to go with half the bus fleet, what, you know, replacing that, what does that look like? And what then are the consequences of now having to reduce that fleet? Well, you have, you can have to reduce your miles, you're going to have to reduce your routes. So that does have a trickle-down effect. And so, those are conversations and decisions that are having to be made because that was, you know, the, the result of the election is, and you're starting to see some of those decisions that are, that are, you know, out there. But we definitely wanted to bring this conversation to the committee to, ultimately, it's going to be your, your recommendation that's going to the board, and ultimately, they're, they're a decision, but we're listening to your feedback.
No, I just want to say, I mean, you guys have higher positions within the city and within this whole committee, but I will tell you as a parent sitting there, being on this board last year, and then sometimes you have to let a process fail. And I feel like that conversation at the parent level, what I hear is being involved in sports, being involved in the schools, being involved in doing different things. They were at a basketball game for my neighbors, and they had to stop the basketball game because the roof started leaking when it was raining last week. And I can't, it was the one down grand on the, I'd have to get the name of it, but it started leaking and they had to call it. And I was like, and, you know, the question was, and my question to them was, what did you vote on that bond? And, you know, before, sorry, but, you know, I'm just telling you, these are the real conversations that are happening. And I think, you know, the buses, let's talk about the buses. I live on Asante and 163rd, and I actually asked, why do I have a bus sitting there in front of the fries when all these other buses are running? Well, they have to because in case one breaks down. My daughter was on a bus that broke down for two weeks in a row, and that, that was their answer to that. So you have people seeing the system fail, so the conversation is very relevant. I don't think that, I think the number matches the need, and to cut it back, to me, would feel like, as a parent, okay, if we needed 90 million versus 140 million, are we cutting a bus out that my child rides? Did we not fix that ceiling that my child couldn't fix, couldn't finish their basketball game? I mean, it's, I, I think this is the relevant time, and as sad as I am that it didn't pass, I almost feel like it's good at this point that it did because we are so overloaded that the conversations are out there, they're on the social media, they're at the basketball and the volleyball games as to what's going on. So I do think we have the ability to push this out there.
Hi, this is Shannon, and I just want to state that I was recently on a field trip with both of my kids riding the bus. And if you have never been on the bu, um, the bus, I would encourage you to ride on the bus. Because as a person of a short stature, riding on the bus in the current buses is highly uncomfortable, and we were sitting two to a seat as adults that are not quite yet hitting 5'2". And I can imagine having high school students or even middle school students traveling long distances in that type, on the current buses that we have for students. And so, riding the bus for 45 to 50 minutes on that bus, I think that that's something that we really need to take into consideration, especially for students that are coming from the Asante area, being bused and riding the buses for a long period of time.
Thank you. Yeah, and like you mentioned, Kelly, I mean, there were operational changes that had to be made, for example, with the Asante, when it's, people don't, and so you might not understand, why is the bus sitting there? This is a, a reality. The buses are breaking down. I mean, I know Craig, Craig experiences overseeing transportation with, on the daily, and so that was kind of the stopgap, was like, okay, well, we'll put a bus there just in case, which has actually come into use more often than, than, than not.
And we did, we tried multiple solutions. Some of, some of the difficulty up there even became just the, the construction, but as you know, some of that was the, the element, but we had explored three or four different possibilities, and it became a reality that because of, when you have buses that, you know, that are that aging of a fleet, there is going to be problems where they're going to, they're going to break down. And so, we have that many on the road too, so plant, and that was just a way to plant and be ready. It's also difficult when it's hot, the heat, and then some of our buses, when they do break, the parts are very difficult to find just because of the age. So, not to rehash all of those pieces again, but those were realities. You see the bus replacement piece on there, but decisions have been made recently even to try to make some, some, you know, so, we had to make some changes of what we're doing within transportation, you know, by talking about lengthening the, you know, and that was a governing board, you know, decision to, you know, to lengthen the, the distance for, you know, for riding a bus and, and, you know, looking at some of those things, when you, when you do that, you know, that's, that's not ideal. I mean, obviously though, that we have to find ways to, to save money in order to be able to, to purchase a few more buses. And, and to that point too, I mean, we, we've also started to look at, you know, is there a cheaper model bus? Maybe it holds a few less kids, you know, one that we buy out there that maybe is, is not as expensive. We, we've tried to, to research every avenue of what the, the best solution will be, because I think all of us would agree that the district is, the length and the far, the, the distance of our schools, of making sure to provide transportation. We don't have a bus bay up north to, to do that. So they're all coming from one spot, and, and we have to be able to reach those kids. So, that's another example. What we did, as, as Meridale said, is we worked with each director, two in some ways, and that was a task we were asked to do, it was back in the, right after the bond.
On November, December?
Yeah. Right after the bond failed is that we went through and we said, okay, bare bones, which ones are absolutely, you would put at the top of the list that we would do? And trying to shrink the amount. But every one of them, facilities, even in that one, we went through all of it, and we still, we still kept landing on, no matter what, even if I take off that 20 million, we still kept landing close to 28 because there was new stuff that kept getting added. And, but we did try to do some of that to see if you can bring that, that number down, but you are going to cut something else out, or push, what you're doing is you're kicking the can farther down the road, and we recognize that. I mean, we saw that just based on those needs. But, but that is ultimately, you know, as a committee, you know, you could decide on what amount you want to bring forward. I mean, that's something that, you know, you want to recommend, but we're going to always, as from our, our seats, is we're going to do everything we can to make sure that it's, it's, it's done responsibly and efficiently, and do the best we can for kids.
Sorry, I don't want to hog the mic, but Kelly, I want to, I, so, my day job here with the district, I'm in charge of facilities and enrichment programs, so I basically rent the facilities, so I was very aware, I got the phone call about that. We're having an adverse effect now because the district grew so fast, and these needs, these things that are happening with just daily maintenance, repairs, putting a new roof on your house, that kind of stuff, the district is the same. And we all know, living in Arizona, that the, it's hard, you know, the weather's hard on it. Countryside is one of them, chiller cooler units, very, very specific, okay? I'm in conversations, I've actually have a meeting Tuesday with the city and all of their directors and stuff to meet over here because we're looking at options because they have a building that they use at the facility, a gym, that's attached to it, and because of the AC issues and stuff and how things are going right now, I'm meeting on a regular with this, I'm actually contemplating, and we're looking at possibly having to shut that down, which directly affects not just DIZARD, but now the community because of the issues and the lack, or the AC units, will it continue to work because they're shutting itself down by design because of the power failures and stuff, which sets off fire alarms that causes fire departments to respond. So there, you're seeing an adverse effect because this bond didn't pass. This is not, we're not, this is not a smokescreen. This is, these are legit needs for what we need. I know you guys know this, but there's people watching on camera, I want them to hear this stuff. So we're now having to make these tough decisions. We've done a good job, and lately, Dr. Croto, how many, how many A-rated schools do we have? 18 out of what, 24?
18 A-rated and 16.
And we're an A-rated district. Everybody wants that. Everybody wants to live in an A-rated school district and live near these A-rated schools. Phenomenal. And I believe I heard at a meeting that we had recently, no C-rated schools, correct?
That is correct.
So that, that task alone right there deserves applause from the community. All we're asking for is just a little bit of support, okay? I know it's 20, but when these numbers, when Meridale goes over, how much is going to affect your tax rate, your personal pocket, that kind of stuff, it's such a small investment when you look at the bigger picture of what this district means to your community. There's people that use our facilities that don't even go to DIZARD, they don't attend our schools. But they rent them, they want their gyms, they want the fields, they want all the things that go with it, well, that has to be upkeep. And we're at a point now where we're looking at shutting some things down because we can't, because we can't, we don't have what we need to pay for that. And it has nothing to do with us being fiscally irresponsible, just the opposite, but these hard decisions are having to make, and there's, there's, there's an effect off of that. So, there's more, and we could literally go on all night, I know we don't have that kind of time, but I just wanted to share some personal insight of things that are happening right now that directly affect what happens. Because when it gets hot during the summer, all my gyms are booked, almost seven days a week, they're booked. But we're going to have to start shutting them down if we can't fix these air conditioning units and things like this, so.
Thanks for that. And just, kind of just for context, and I know we talked about on the last committee just how much funding, I think that question had come up, so that just reminds me of, how much funding do we receive as a, as a district, just ongoing state funding for capital needs? On average, based on our student enrollment, we receive about 12 and a half to 13 million per year. And again, if the enrollment declines, it, it, you know, that's the decline with it. So about 12 million. But again, that goes to, that, that, and what I, I think often people forget or don't realize is, that actually also is intended to cover software. The auditor general sees that as capital. So, any software, any devices, any Chromebooks, any just ongoing operational needs, that really is just kind of cut off the top off the 12 million. So, to try to build up to even getting close to the amount to really repair some of these, that, that's where the, the challenge is. Because I think often I get that feedback as, well, just save what you receive, well, often what you're receiving, it's like your checking account, it's being deposited, but it's being used for ongoing operations. So you try to reserve, and we do, we've been building and making a deliberate effort to, to reserve as much as we can because there are instances where there is just, we were very close to having to issue a pretty large PO for one of our schools that we, we have to, we just have to do it. It was going to dip quite a bit in reserves, and at the very last second, the school facilities division was able to come in and fund it. But it's been an approved project for well over a year, they just haven't had the funding for it, and it came through at the last second. But that's why we need to have those reserves to be able to pull at that last second if, if needed. So that is the ongoing challenge, but. Great conversations. I do want to, and, and we can certainly continue that, we'll kind of pivot a little bit into the override conversation as well, because as you know, and, and we spoke about it at the last meeting, we are entering year five, so just as a reminder, overrides are funded for a total of seven years, fully funded for the first five, and if they're not approved, they start phasing out by a third until by the end of year seven, they're entirely gone. The question at the last committee request was, what impact have we seen on student achievement? So just a background, the override, there was a loss of the override in 2014, and so that did result in having to start making cuts that following school year, school year 15, 16. So the, in addition to, there were having to be teacher reductions, one of the largest ones that I think people seem to recall is the reduction to go to half-day kindergarten. And so the question has been, what long-term impact have we seen? Are we seeing an, an impact on student achievement in that cohort? So we worked with our research department to just look and, and see what types of differences have they seen, and just there for context. We've seen the most of the difference in the English language, and just in your reading, generally starts lower, and it doesn't really close the gap compared to those students who were in a full-day kindergarten program. So, there is, and again, do we want to say it's entirely related to that? We can't necessarily state that because there's been a lot of factors. One of those, interestingly, was when we looked and saw, okay, how were the exams, excuse me, state exams? In that course of, of time, we went from having state Ames exams to AZ Merit. In 2020, there wasn't testing, then we went to AZM2, and now we're doing AASA. So, there's been a lot of different testings at the state level, so it's kind of difficult to say, okay, this is exactly, you know, the, the result of it. However, when looking at, at data, it does seem to trend that that cohort, that kindergarten class through our currently now ninth graders, you see that there has been an impact to certain extent. Could it be attributed to that? You know, but at, at the same time, that is something that, is something that we've kept an eye on, on that cohort that was affected through that reduction. So just as a reminder, current year budget, it's about 25 and a half million, so these are the programs that are funded through it. I've included the link, you're always welcome to go and see how those funds are, are spent. This was the breakdown of where the budget currently is, so you see about, really full-day K is only 10% of it, 25 and a half million, it's only 2.5. The largest amount is going to come with your 9.8 million of, if we have to reduce or increase class sizes, that, you know, that's teachers, that, those are those positions that really has the greatest impact as well as a lot of those programs. So, at the last committee meeting, we talked about what other districts in our peer group, and again, this peer group is who the auditor general kind of compares us to for operational purposes, do they also have overrides in place? And the answer is yes. Now, most of them do have the full, as, as the capacity we're able to go up to is the 15%. Most, but two have the full 15%. Peoria has gone down to 13%. I think that's what was palpable for their, you know, for their community there. Glendale Union, they are not phasing out, I believe, and they've been at that 10% override for, for a number of years. They do utilize other funding sources, I believe they get DSEG monies and then things like that. So, they, they draw on those, those other balances. So, in looking at it, the question was, well, what if we didn't do a full 15%? What if the request was, you know what, we're going to look at our peers over here, they're at 13, 10, they can do it, what does that do to the 20, you know, 25.5? So right now, based, we did receive our assessed valuations for the upcoming year, so I was able to at least get a good estimate on what that override for next year will be. And as I mentioned, next year still is fully funded, we're going into year five. So again, if it's not approved or renewed or continued, it does start phasing out. But for, just for this conversational purposes, 26.4 million is about what you can expect to see as an override for next year. Now, if in that arena, we were only a 13% district, you'd only have a 22.9 million. So right there, you're already shaving off, you know, 3 million. And then if we were only 10%, you're only looking at 17.6. So, again, we would then have to look to these programs and see what of those we, we would not have, because we were, we were already going in with a reduced override amount. So I just wanted to provide that for context, because I know that question came up, is has the committee even had the conversation or considered, do we not, you know, make that recommendation to go for the full 15%? But I just wanted you to have, for context, what that would look like. So wanted to get your, your thoughts on that. I did not, so I did, it was kind of like back-of-napkin little estimates I did here. So, just for context... So just for context, the tax rate impact, again, so we, so again, these are all taxes on your secondary taxes, so we want to take a look at what impact that has. So currently, the, at the full 15%, I estimate it would be about a dollar 10 per 100,000 assessed value, you're looking at about 219 per year on an average assessed valuation home is what goes to pay for the override. If you now look at 13%, it would be about $190 per year. If you go down to 10%, it would be about a 74 cent tax rate, so it'd be about 146 per year. So it helps to kind of quantify that sometimes in, in dollar form of what does that do? So an average taxpayer, let's say they would be paying $220, let's say, if they're an average assessed valuation home, but now you have, you know, $10 million less, you're now paying about 146. So you have about a $60 savings there, $60, $70 savings per year, while having about $10 million less in an ongoing budget. Good question. I thought about this afternoon, I'm like, oh, it's the tax rates. So thoughts? I, I know, as a district, this district has consistently had the full 15% that's been embedded into ongoing operations. The only time we did dip down to that, to that 10% was really when we had to start phasing it out, and that was that 15, 16 school year, is when we had the reduction over 140 teachers, we reduced a lot of our special programs, music, arts, athletics, you saw, started seeing a lot of those programs were collapsed and/or not offered, and then we went to full-day kindergarten. And it only lasted a year, we went back out to the voters in November of 15, and it was approved, and so those programs and funding was brought back starting 16, 17. And so the district has consistently had that funding since then. I will say, was it in 2020? I know we gave you guys the election history, we did go out in year four, just in advance, just in case it failed, we went back out in year five, and it, and it did pass. And so that's where we're at now, we're on year five now with this new, upcoming on our, on year five of this new override cycle.
If I recall, the last time we tried to float a bond and an override, they both went down, and next year, we just did an override, right?
Correct. So when they both went, still remember the amount, the bond failed by 365 votes, and then the override failed by a little bit of a larger margin, but then when we went back out, the override alone, it passed.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
But I'm going to say, I, I think with the real issues that people are actually feeling now, I think that that's a different time, what they were looking at then versus now. I think the needs are there, I think they can be justified, I think it's going to be really about communicating that, because these conversations are happening out there, and everybody wants something done, and they're, everyone's, every neighborhood is feeling these effects. So I don't, I personally, as a mom of one of those, and living in those neighborhoods, having those conversations, I, I don't, I, I think there's a need for it. This is not just asking for a superintendent to get a raise. This is, this is very well justified, and they're seeing the results of not doing it.
Thank you for that. And really, just to also kind of put that out there and clarify, anything that we spend on the override really has to be embedded into classroom operations and instructional related. So you can't issue an override and now increase the capacity and spend it on administration, it really has to be focused specifically for classroom programs, so thank you for that comment. Yep, so yeah, all directly related to the classroom. Okay, that's what we're here for.
Pat's full of opinions tonight, and I'm helping educate people. So with the risk of sounding political, election, elections have consequences, good or bad. They have things that, you know, that happen. We've seen the history, and it's important to understand our history, where we've been, what happens when we do certain things. Overrides, not having that ability, having the effect, having to lay off, what was the number, Maridell, like 134 staff members, am I close? Something like that? Okay, but it's, the, these are effects that, and then immediately, once the community sees that, they, oh, we need it. And it's like, so let's not get to that point. We're in year five. We made a really hard decision in our last bond override session, committee if you will, about bond seemed like more important because we had more time with the, with the override because of we were going into year five, or we could have that year five, the buffer, if you will. Newsflash, buffer's gone. We have next school year, but we've got to get this out to the public. So again, we're at a situation where no fault of our own, but we're being responsible, but now we, we have those things. It's, I think it's safe to say, just as a parent, we've become accustomed to having a certain level of service and a certain level of programs and things within DIZAR, which are phenomenal. And living it firsthand as a parent, as a coach, seeing it, being on the campuses, is incredible, and I think most families would agree with that. We want to see that continue. To continue that, we need these things. And again, I, like I reiterated earlier, we don't, I don't think we enjoy this, we don't, we don't enjoy, we don't relish, oh, we get to go out for an override again, oh, we get to go out for a bond. It's just a fact of doing business and doing business the right way. It's a fact of life, so we need to go approach this now. So again, Kelly, I'm with you, these are things, I think people are starting to see it, and there is starting to be a lot more discussions, we need to capitalize on that, and let's get those discussions out there so we can make these things happen and keep this train moving forward, if you will.
I'm going to piggy, I'm going to piggyback off of both of these and ask some questions. Do we know from the last round of polling that we had done, if, I can't recall if there were issues that resonated more with people that participated in the polls, if it was the bond issues, like the funding of the bonds, you know, do, do, do community members care more about air conditioning units working or retention of, of, of teachers? Does that, does that question make sense? I don't remember if it was part of that, part of that polling.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now, just to see if I have questions.
My second question, while you're looking that up, is, and I know I came in here a little late, I was looking at the five-year history of multiple-question elections, there are labels on here about questions and MNOs and DAAs and bonds, was that covered, what those mean?
Yes, so the, the bond, well, the bonds just for itself, the MNO is an override, excuse me, and so then some of those, I thought it was kind of odd, because some of them say MNO and some are 15%, so unless they specify they're going up to the full amount. But basically, MNO and the 15% are both overrides.
Okay.
And then district additional assistance at the DAA, that's if districts have the ability to go for a capital override. So it's a, it's also just for a short, a certain amount of time, it's also seven, seven years, don't quote me, but it's also, all of these are tax on property, but yeah, so the ones you see on here are going to be bond, MNO overrides, or a capital override, which is the DAA. Property, again, if they have any sale of property, that has to go to the voters, so those are what you'll see there for property. And I'm not sure what Gilbert had in '24 related to other, would have to look that up, but, does that answer your question?
Yeah, part of it, and are these like multiple things that show up on a ballot, like the question one, question two, question three? So if I'm looking at this correctly, the Catalina-Foot Hills Unified School District in 2022, do they have three things on the ballot?
Correct.
Is that what that means?
Yes, so Catalina-Foot Hills in '25, they requested a bond, they requested a capital override and an MNO override.
Okay, thank you.
Those were good questions. You know, there's, there's been a, I'm getting into the, my political science background here a little bit, but when you start to look at trends over time, it's very interesting what you guys brought up, and I'm kind of summarizing here, is that, you know, when, when you looked at the historical element of, of putting two items on a ballot, generally what would happen is that you saw, you would hear, and then you would see, I mean, because of the data, it was showing that voters would lean towards one and maybe not the other. You would get one to pass and one to fail, or both would fail. It was very difficult when you did that, because it just, it didn't go over well. And I'm not saying it worked, you got to look at, you got to study the community a little bit, too. So what we've started to notice is, we just looked at some of the trend recently, we started to see that it was, it was, some of it was either year four, what's happening out there, what the district is doing, or you're not. I mean, and I'm not saying it's in every case, but you, you did see some trends, you look at that data, that they, they both passed or they both failed. Very interesting when you saw the data on there, and, and I, I can't say it's going to be in every case, it'd be an interesting study to do nationally, and I'm, I'm kind of digressing to that piece, but it was interesting to see that, because I think we talked about it in the committee last year extensively about the, I, at least I'm summarizing, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, but I remember there was a very, very much a concern of the idea of trying to do both in the recommendation.
Yeah.
Very much, that's what I heard. The other part I'm, I'm hearing in the, in the summary piece, and I, and I, you know, Patrick, you brought it up with this element, it was in the early presentations that went out, was to show what are the current successes of the district. When you see, you know, when you start to study some of these districts, too, you know, obviously we look at location, but you're also, if you start to look at how successful a district is academically, that can also probably play into the, the feelings of the, the community as well. So it's education then, as well, that, that goes along with that. So those pieces, I think, are, are part of it, I think they tell part of the story of, of what has DIZAR been doing to have a trend of academic success, and how do you make sure that, that families know that, the community knows that, you know, the voters know that? Because one thing that happens, and Maridell's department does it every year, is it's very transparent of what the finances are of the district and what you're doing, and that's important. And I think that was brought up by this committee, again, I'm just, I'm going back to some of these elements that we heard, that were said that were so critical to what we were talking about last year, we, you know, being very transparent in what we're saying and what we're doing. And so I think that's a, that's a, that's a big part of this story, is we start to get to this, you know, summarizing the next steps and what this committee wants to make it, make with a recommendation.
If I could just answer Travis's question first, so I pulled up the survey results, so what, the question, and I think that might be what you're asking, if both a budget continuation, so at the time it was, the override would have continued. If both, essentially, if both an override and a bond issue were on the ballot, which of these opinions comes closest to your own? 44.2 was likely going to vote yes on both. If it was only one or the other, it was 60, 68% in support of an override, and it was 52 in support of a bond. But if they were both together, it was still 44%. So it looked like the override had a little bit more support in that sense, but at the time, it, it was, the highest was definitely likely voting yes on both.
As a follow-up, was that, you're going to have to remind me, was that after the poll, the people that were being polled were made aware of what?
Yes.
Where the monies go?
Of where?
Like they were educated on what an override is, they were educated on a bond?
No, so this was on the survey, so basically, they started, they did a pre-survey, so pre-questions, and they would ask them if they were, you know, what is your viewpoint of DIZAR overall, or what is your viewpoint of education as a whole? I'm trying to kind of remind myself, too, on there. And then they went into if there was a, a bond, like what are these, what are your, your most important things that you see? Is it retaining teachers, is it maintaining class sizes? And so then the, the person, the surveyor ranked it. So they didn't receive necessarily information on the 127 million, if that's your question, because that wasn't decided until after, but it was ranking, what were those items of biggest concern? So for the override-related items, the highest, the highest ranking was extra math and reading support, competitive teacher salaries, retaining teachers, and then it kind of trickled down to the, the bottom of the list was all-day kindergarten, because remember, the consultant he had come and said, not, not many districts pull full-day K on the override, because that might not be the most attractive to everyone, like everyone's mostly interested in math and reading supports, et cetera. Now, related to the bond, what went highest of importance was school safety improvements, was by far the highest, roof repairs, HVAC repairs, a lot of facilities, and down towards the bottom was like fence and gate improvements and key card access, so some safety, key card related.
So I think, to your question, there was definition in the surveying portion of that piece, you know, of what, what an override, what a bond, of those items are. So that did come out in the, in the survey element. And then, and then there was, you know, obviously, when, you know, when the election was called for and then that process began, there was educational materials that were out there explaining the difference. But there were still questions, I mean, I think everybody's aware of, there were still conversations everybody had out there where, you know, I heard them even afterwards, where, you know, you would hear the misunderstanding still. You know, I voted no because, and it had nothing to do with it, they were talking about MNO funding and it was a bond election.
It's interesting, the demographics, I'm looking at the final one, the demographics says, do you have children under 18 living at home with you? Of the people that were surveyed, 60% did not have children under 18 with them, 36% did, and three and a half refused. So the majority of those surveyed did not have school-age children.
If I may, just, we, last year, again, we decided to hold off on the override, that was the correct decision, I believe that to this day, because, two things. Number one, no one could have accused us for acting in bad faith, nobody. That's why you saw no organized opposition from anyone. Number two, it also tells me that that, had we had floated both, both would have failed, and we would have thought they failed for different reasons. Now I know, right? If they, if we floated both and they both went down, then we would have said, oh, that's what we did, we did it, we floated both, we should have done that. But they would have failed either way. So the numbers had nothing to do anything, the lineup had nothing to do anything, we caught it in a bad year and we didn't message. We, the selection, we lost it before it went to the ballot, so. So we have to vote it now, we have to full vote.
I think your summary is, and that's just a, I mean, that's a, that's a good summary, I think, for everybody to hear. And that, because we did, I mean, that was very, that was very well sta, you know, at the time, but now, how you're summarizing what, what the results are and what would have happened, you're, you know, obviously, we don't know for sure, but yes, I would, just based on the statistics of what we saw as well. So we're, we're in a, we're in a place of, we have to, you know, be thinking about what are some of our next steps and where we're at, and the committee's going to have to make some decisions of, because we want to, we want to give an update to the governing board, the next time the governing board will be meeting is April 7th, so it's an opportunity at that time to provide an update of where the, you know, the committee's at. If there's, and be, I think we, we can take a few more comments tonight, we don't want to go too long and belabor it, and, but we would want to say, though, is that on the 28th is when we would make the, the formal recommendation, whether it's one, the other, both, neither. So really need to hear from the group now is, is that, is there a, is there some strong feelings on what we might be thinking is, should be presented in that, or whether a committee wants to go at that time?
Want to start?
I think both. I think both need to go up, I think we need to hit the messaging hard, and there are several different things we can do that, but I think it's very much needed, I think it is, we are outside of the three pages of a ballot to vote on where it takes you 45 minutes and 800 different, that you, by the time you got to the end of it, you didn't even, your eyes were crossed. I'm just going to vote no. You know, I don't know. But I think this is the opportunity, and like I said, sometimes systems have to fail before people truly understand it, and I think we have seen enough of a failure that we have people's attention. So I think now is the time to start the conversation, but my vote right now would be, and I do not see it changing, to do both of them.
I would, I would fully agree with that. I think the only thing that we need to consider is, are the new costs, because as a year goes by, we're going to have more things that are in need. So do we make sure that the board knows that, or do we stick with these same numbers? You want to?
Once again, Pat has an opinion. So we've lost our buffer with the override. The bond needs have not gone away, if anything, they've increased. So those needs are out there, they're going to continue strongly, feel strongly, and again, very much an optimist that we can do both. Not if we can. The, the numbers that you provided about districts coming out with both and being successful are encouraging, okay? Educating the public to the actual, what's really going on, what's the difference, why are we in this situation, how do we get here, are necessary. 100% agree with Johnny Melton, we did the right thing. I went home and slept well, and I felt like everything was going to go well. But again, when you get down to your, however many pages of a ballot, and I'm voting on my 35th judge, who I have no idea who that person is, do we retain? I'm sorry, it gets lost in the shuffle. We've got an opportunity with timing right now to get away from that and get back into it, and I think that's, that- And I think that's, that does not need, cannot be understated. We need, the timing is here. The override is gone. After this, I just pulled it up from our, our last meeting, but after year, fiscal year '25, '26 coming up, we're 100% funded with the override. Going into fiscal year '26, '27, we go to 66, down to 33, and then it ends. That's when the cuts happen. That's when we see impact. That's when we see we lose, start losing programs. Don't look now, but surprise is blowing up. DICEART School District is growing. There's needs. People expect that certain level of customer service that we provide, and we do an excellent job at that. So we need to continue that. So we'd be remiss, I feel, if we didn't go out for both. And again, if you've got a different opinion, absolutely. But I feel incredibly strong that both need to go out. I do think you do bring up a good point. The numbers should be looked at. Personally, on the override, the 15%, that's a done deal. I don't think we mess around with going 13, 10. Now you have to start looking at potential cuts for reasons that just really shouldn't be that. We should be able to get that 15 across, especially when easily 80% of the school districts that do those, that you showed us, they're going 15%. The bond needs, again, we've, we've, we've discussed this at length. Those needs are still there and growing. I mean, how much are the elevators going to set us back, Craig? You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's, these are things that we, nobody thought about that. You know, you don't think about elevators breaking. They just work until they don't. And then all of a sudden, now you're like, well, we've got a problem. So again, the education of the public, seeing what's going on, watching and listening to them respond to, hey, this is what we're seeing and feeling. Their word of mouth on that is our best asset. We need to capitalize on that and go forward with a strong message. I do have a question, once everybody's discussed on this, about the difference between the 7th and 28th as far as actual briefings? Because I know we have a hard May 9th date that we have to get to or get before that. So when we're done at that moment, I do have a question on that.
Absolutely, we'll clarify that. Can we hear from the other committee members? We really do want to hear from everybody.
Yes, I'm for both of them. I just have a question about, and maybe we'll have to talk about it later. How do you get the information out? I knew, I do understand, like, from standpoint, Ms. Kelly, you're talking about people are talking about it. But for me, I guess I look at it as which generation is talking about it? Which person is actually talking about it? Being parent, guardian, grandparent? Is it a community member? Is it someone? I, I'm not, not specifically to you. I get what you're saying, and I look at, I read through my social media, and I go to the meetings. And most of the people that I talk to or that are at meetings, that go to the meetings, just at one school in particular, they're all boomers, generation. So, and I, I gravitate to them because my parents, they grew up supporting the school, working in the school. But there's a huge gap, not talking about the gap in generations, but a huge gap in the understanding of who the responsibility for the child is and where they work through that. Because most of the people on where I live at, just saying, outside looking in, and it could be, it could be not, but their grandparents taking care of the children. And then they have great-grandchildren that are getting ready to get hit with this preschool, kindergarten, first, second grade, math and reading, the programs. So that's just a question I have, like, I don't know if it's directly right now. But I am for both. I just believe there's a huge gap, and not just generational gap, but of the responsibility. But that's, that's statewide, that's...
It is, it is. And if I can step in and just say, we have an opportunity here because who's going to, who's going to pass this is going to be your voters. So I don't think there's an R or a D on this. This is about our families. This is about our community. This is about our life. So we live in, in a congressional district that has R and D committees. You have precinct committeemen. You have precinct captains. These are people embedded in these neighborhoods. I am one of them. You have access to roles. We have Hit 'Em Up apps that we have learned to do it as my old self, doing it via a text message. This is who we need to hit up, to join forces with, to have these conversations at the libraries and through text messages, through the precinct captains, because it's your voters that need to understand. So it's from 18 all the way up. And that's where we have access to the roles are. I think if we come at it using the forces that we have to continue the conversations that are happening in an educated way, rather than it being opinion, or I think, I think, when you have the hard facts to hold these discussions, and you can present them and offer a chance to have the discussions, we have the opportunity to do that. That's my opinion.
No, thank you. You articulated well. I just wanted someone else to say it so that they can hear it. Like, but I, I feel you. I'm totally...
I do feel like it is kind of all or nothing. I don't, I wasn't, I wasn't able to do anything after last February because unfortunately, I, I lost my job. So I felt bad that I wasn't able to help out with any kind of education or just getting out into the public to help and get the message out as to why this vote needs to pass. But I think in 2025, with fewer issues on the ballot, we can be more razor-focused on this and let people know, listen, this is how much it's going to cost. If you can give up a couple of coffees a month or a few meals, a couple of eating out, eating out less per year, that way we won't have to worry about a ceiling leaking water or a chiller going bad or a bus breaking down. These are things that we have to educate them on, and we can be really laser-focused on it and go at them with both the bond and the override and let them know, we need another bus depot up north. We can't continue to drive kids all the way from Asante down past this area and send them to school. They, they shouldn't have to go as far. So I think we need to go with both and keep the number the same because otherwise it's going to grow. The number's going to grow. Talking about security, what was at the meeting we had months ago about removing social workers from? That's going to add more money to security possibly because students would possibly be at greater risk because of social issues that are not addressed. So I say we do both.
I'll go, I'll be quick. You have no choice. We have to do both.
The bond and the override? I agree with what everyone else has said just in terms of the time being right and that there, I think that the community has seen that there is a need for the things that we are requesting. And so that's, that would be my recommendation, would be to go for both the bond and the override at this time.
Johnny, did you have any other?
Yeah, did you want to?
Yes, it's very simple. You don't have a choice. We have to go for both. We, we don't have the luxury anymore. So the question is, numbers, don't worry. The bond number is not going to matter. I will defer to the governing board. If they want to change the O and M number to 13 or 14.5%, probably leave it at 15. If it fails for some reason, go back in '26 to a different number. But I don't know if numbers are going to really move. This is not going to fall on partisan lines. It's not going to fall on a number line. If you want to win the message, if you want to win this, you're going to have to get a new PAC manager. Okay?
And, and real quickly, as far as messaging, what we have to educate the public on is making sure that they vote for the city of surprise. Don't vote for themselves. I mean, even if, you know, if the, the older communities, vote for what the city wants. We have to make sure that they understand that it is a vote for everybody, not just, not just them.
With both of those, and I, I believe we've heard from everybody, if there's an intention to make a recommendation, and, and Patrick, I know you've been the spokesperson to speak to the governing board. The, the element of, of the, of both of those, I liked what you said there, Mr. Melton, is that, is that if you, you know, the governing board will make the decisions on those. The recommendation can come from the committee. Understanding of those pieces, as Mary Dell educates, you know, just, you know, and brings that information forward. She can provide that information of, this is the difference between 15%, 13%, 10%, those impacts of those monies. But at least there's an understanding there. And, and, but that's the, the message conveyed. As we heard very much, if I'm wrong, somebody say, but I was hearing stay at 15% was the recommendation. And then I heard stay at a recommendation of 127 million as a recommendation. Those are pieces, you know, but I also believe that what Mr. Melton said needs to be taken into consideration is, is that, that element of making adjustments to those numbers, if needed, based on the feelings of, because there's that part of it, and maybe it's the political side to it. I don't, you know, we purposely then looked at, okay, prior, you were trying to prioritize the list, right? So you're going to go after what's absolutely necessary. And so if numbers are adjusted. So there's, there's an element to that, but this committee does have the right to bring forward that recommendation at the same amount.
So the approach that Johnny and Kelly were referring to, and others touched on it, I, I don't, I, we don't need to adjust the numbers. The 15% is fine. The 127 million is fine. If they want to bring it down a little bit, Craig, you did an awesome job, you guys and, and company about going through and looking at, do we need this? You know, the, the restroom needs and the things like that. I can tell you, as being a coach at one of those schools, yes, those are needs. So I don't see they need to go away. Our approach needs to be, from the moment we put a recommendation in front of the governing board, and the governing board makes the decision, if they choose to support that, our next steps are actions of getting the message out, using the people that are already actively involved with that, getting it out, and then not having to fight through all of these different things that goes in a, in a, in a major election year. That's our, that's our strength right now. That's going to be our, our push to get this. Whether you like politics or not, it doesn't matter, but they're, they're there. That's how we get this out. And your message with the city, that we're voting as a community now. There is no R and D in this. There's no individual. This is community looking out for our kids, our community, moving forward. Period. We want to maintain the level that DICEART has achieved. We're already there as a school district. We need to maintain that. To do that, we need your help. And that's the message. Just got to get out there, and it's got to be strong. And I 100% agree. And I don't know if this is the right place to say it, but we can do better with our approach through our PAC and everything else.